I have two thirty. Who's gonna kick this off?
I, I see that I'm down here as, as, as president, so I guess that that means I will call the Lower Smokey Hill Water Supply Access District Incorporated Board of Directors' regular meeting to order, and we will have a roll call.
Melissa Hodges.
Here.
Tom Toll. Rod Franz.
Here.
Carl Esping.
Here.
Trent David.
Here.
Hoppick.
Here.
Carl Ryan.
Here.
All right, we will go on to item two, approval of minutes.
Item two point one, approval of November ninth, two thousand twenty minutes.
Do we, do we have any corrections, additions, or deletions to make to the minutes?
If not, I move that we approve the November ninth, two thousand and twenty minutes.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the November ninth, twenty twenty minutes. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item three, new business.
Item three point one, discussion and action on insurance renewal term and options.
And with, and with us, we have Nancy Chesler, our risk management agent, and she is gonna kind of talk briefly about the insurance policy and where that takes it.
So, as most of you know, you probably know that back in January of two thousand seventeen, shortly after the board was put together, created, I worked with the local insurance broker, insurance partners, to procure directors and officers liability insurance. And we were able to do that, work together for a annual policy at the cost of eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. And so since then, we've been able to renew that policy every year in January for the same exact amount of eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. So as you know, probably, that we have a one million dollar limit, and that that coverage is gonna pay defense expenses and financial losses for members acting within the scope of their managerial duties. So, the reason I come to you this time around is Charleros is actually offering up three different options for your approval. So the first option is to continue like we have in the past and just renew the policy for eight hundred and seventy-three dollars for one policy year. Or the second option is, you can prepay for a three-year term for the dollar value of two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, or you can do an installment plan for three years, and that will be for eight hundred and seventy-three dollars per year, which is what we're currently paying for an amount of two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars. So kind of let me kind of go through that again to make sure that you caught on. So, I know it can be a little bit much information at one time. So one year, you can just renew for the one year like we've done in the past for eight hundred and seventy-three dollars. I'm actually going to recommend that you renew for a three-year period. So you have two choices there. You can renew prepaying two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars, or you can renew doing a three-year installment and just paying eight hundred and seventy-three dollars like you normally have. Now, the difference in those values, because it's two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars if you do an installment plan, and two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars if you do like a prepay, and you only really save a hundred and thirty-two dollars. So it's actually the board's decision on which, you know, one of those three options you want to do. But my, the reason I'm recommending the three-year policy is because the, the insurance market is very volatile right now. And I cannot promise you that this time next year, when we go to renew the policy, that you'll have any kind of rate, like any kind of premium like we do today. It could increase by a great deal, or it possibly could stay the same, but I doubt very seriously it would stay the same. I think you'd see some potentially big increases. So, anyway, I'll let Debbie kind of handle the budget aspect and kind of let you know how we've been handling that in the past since we, we've got, with the insurance.
Yeah, this is Debbie Pack, Director of Finance. We had historically just paid and budgeted the eight hundred and seventy-three dollars a year. And in fact, for two thousand twenty-one, we did, but we budgeted a little bit more at eight hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars, or eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars, sorry. However, we do have a little bit of flexibility in our budget, and we could do an amended budget if we, if we do get into that situation, because this is certified with the state. So if we do get in a situation where the amounts that we budgeted for two thousand twenty-one, if the actual expenses are gonna go over, we can also do, we could do an amended budget on that. And historically, we've been funding that, well, that's kind of the budget side. I'll go into the funding side. Historically, we've been funding that out of dollars that were collected in the first year. We collected dollars in excess of what we owed on A and E and O and M. So we've been just running the bank account and paying those out of there without billing them back to the city or the irrigators. However, currently, we only have a balance in our bank account of two thousand two hundred dollars, so that is not gonna be enough to cover it. So in two thousand twenty-one, we would need to allocate that out both to the city and to the irrigators in some respect. We could go ahead and issue this payment if you chose to pay the full amount upfront, just by simply filling the city and getting their funding now, and then filling the irrigators when we do that normal billing in August and, and collect theirs later in the year. Were there any questions on that?
Trent, Trent Davis, not so much about the financing part, but if you do the three-year agreement out, does that, or are there any scenarios in which the rate could go up during that three-year period, or is that rate locked in?
Yeah, if that rate is locked in, and that's why I'm suggesting to do the three-year rate, because that locks you in at that eight hundred and seventy-three dollars if you do it by installment, or it locks you into the two thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars if you prepaid all of it upfront.
Mayor Hoppick here. Is there any reason that we would cancel this policy in that three-year period?
I mean, the only thing would be if the board dissolved, but that's, I don't see that happening.
I don't see that happening.
No.
So, okay. I, I mean, I think it makes sense to lock in the rate for three years.
And Trent Davis here again. If, is the city picking up the, the, the initial tab now? Is that, that's easily doable for both, both entities, or does the installment plan work better for the irrigators? Either way, they would just get billed once a year anyway, as far as the budget's concerned?
Well, we would do if you prepaid the twenty-four hundred dollars. The irrigator's portion of that is about twenty-six percent. So we would bill them twenty-six percent of twenty-four hundred dollars in August to pay for the three years. And then when we, when it comes up again, we'd bill that again at, at that point.
Got you. All right, thank you.
That, that sounds fine to us, I believe.
So this is the, is the consensus then to go with the, the three-year prepaid insurance policy?
We need a motion. Madam President, I would move we approve the three-year offer for the insurance. I would second that. In advance.
Yeah, I didn't catch that. Who seconded?
I think that Commissioner Davis seconded it.
Okay, okay. We have a motion and a second to do a three-year prepaid renewal on our insurance. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. And that will take us on to item number four, unfinished another business. Looks like we need to have a discussion of our next meeting date.
Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities, we provided a couple of dates here for the next meeting, one being May third of two thousand twenty-one. And we've identified reviewing the two thousand twenty-two budget, author, authorization, and publication of the two thousand twenty-two budget, then review our two thousand twenty-three budget. And May third is the day that we're proposing, which then to have the public hearing on the budget, June twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one, then approval of the two thousand twenty-two budget, election of officers in June is kind of a part of our annual meeting. But what we ran into in the past is trying to have the correct time that we need between publishing the budget and having the public hearing due to the different counties that we have to work with and the timing of the newspaper. So we tried to, over time, we've learned this is about the timeframe and the schedule it works best for. So we make those suggestions. It definitely knew a week either way, if they, one of these states creates a problem for someone on the board.
Carl Ryan, interdum.
Do any of the commissioners see any issues with the May third and the June twenty-first dates that are proposed by staff?
No.
And do we need to take action to adopt those as our next meeting dates then?
Yes, and two separate motions.
Okay.
One for June twenty-first, if you could please.
Okay, all right.
I could not hear Ms. Tasker. What was that last comment?
You only, two separate motions, one for each meeting date.
Madam President, Carl Ryan here. I'd move that we accept the staff's recommendation of May third, two thousand twenty-one, for review of the twenty-two budget, authorized publication of two thousand twenty-two budget notice, and review the two thousand twenty-three budget.
Commissioner Brain, second.
We have a motion and a, and a second to accept May third, two thousand twenty-one as the date to review our two thousand twenty-two budget, authorized publication of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two budget notice, and review the two thousand twenty-three budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. All right.
This is just a point of order. Should we be roll calling since we're on zone?
I'm sorry, you're probably, you're probably right. I'm sure you're right.
The unanimous, but, you know, moving forward, maybe we ought to do that.
Duly noted. That's absolutely, you're absolutely right.
Mayor Hoppick here. I move that we set June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one for the public hearing of the two thousand twenty-two budget, approval of the twenty-two budget, and election of officers.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
We have a motion and a second to set June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one as the date for the public hearing of the two thousand twenty-two budget, approval of two thousand twenty-two budget, and the election of officers. Could we have a roll call, please?
Davis.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Esping.
Aye.
Hoppick.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hodges.
Aye. And that motion passes. Is there anything else that we need to address, Ms. Tasker?
Martha Tasker, Director of Utilities. I'm not aware of any other business that we need to bring before you today.
All right. In that case, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mayor Hoppick here, second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, and I guess we'll do this by roll call again, so that I get in the habit here.
Davis.
Aye.
Esping.
Aye.
Franz.
Aye.
Hoppick.
Aye.
Ryan.
Aye.
Hodges.
Aye. And we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Carl.
How about that? Way to go.
See you, Carl.
Yeah, thanks, Martha. I have scheduled, I think I have two forty-five to the,
Oh, Ryan, slide one.
Yes, to the SMC study session, and Mr. Scrag or Mr. Wood, who's gonna head that up?
Yeah, quickly turn it over to Mr. Wood. His presentation gives you a good background, so I think he's got it covered, and I'll hand it off to him. Okay, Mayor Commissioners, I'm gonna throw up a presentation here. Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood, by the way, will go through this. Great. So as you know, we've had several discussions about Solana Media Connection and the recording and casting of meetings over the last couple of years. The last occasion that we had a discussion was in December, and we promised to bring you some additional information here in January, and maybe get some guidance from the City Commission on how you'd like us to move forward. So I'm gonna provide you just a kind of a basic overview of what we've discussed in the past, and what has kind of brought us to this point today. So we started the discussion with, about Solana Media Connection on June third of two thousand twenty. At that point, I, I provided an overview for the City Commission. That was just a basic historical overview about how our relationship with Solana Media Connection and the Cox Cable and the PEG channels, and kind of all of the details about how recording and casting of our City Commission meetings works. At, at that time, and obviously that was brought on because there had been some concerns about performance in the past, and at that time, this is a list of the things that we discussed as, as issues and, and performance concerns. So meetings not being broadcast in their entirety, meetings maybe being cut off early or starting late. There's been lots of talk about video quality, audio quality, screens just blanking out. At that time, we, we had some discussions about staff turnover. We talked about the viewership a little bit. We also talked about their use of social media, website outages, and their, the, the issues with how the videos were catalogued on the website and on YouTube, and being able to find a video when you were trying to find one. So at that, and this is just in a continuation of, of what the agreement says with Solana Media Connection. So, no, so at the time, we talked about possible expectations that we might look for if we were to change the, the agreement and the way we move forward. And some of those things that we, we wanted were higher-quality video, videos published more quickly online, closed captioning was something that we discussed quite a bit. I'm not gonna read through all of these, but this is the list of, of what we talked about as expectations, and then possible priorities. So one of the big things was improved quality, of course. We also talked about coverage of study sessions, getting those videos online in a quick manner, and then being able to find videos and search for them more quickly online, and then also the closed captioning. So at the June third meeting, the, the City Commission directed us,
You going upstairs?
To follow up and have another discussion. So at that, when we had the follow-up meeting, these are the four options that we presented to the City Commission. The first was just to allow the, the agreement that we had with SMC to automatically renew, to provide notice of intent to terminate and direct staff to negotiate a new agreement, or to provide notice of intent to terminate and direct us to do something else, which maybe look at in-house management or provide alternate direction for what the City Commission was interested in. And at that time, the City Commission directed us to provide notice of intent to terminate and direct us to negotiate a new agreement. So that was done. We delivered a letter to Solana Media Connection before July first deadline, and we started negotiating new terms. So there was a lot of conversation with Solana Media Connection and city staff, and that culminated in the October seventeenth meeting, where we reviewed the new agreement. So just a couple of things that the agreement says is that, that Solana Media Connection is gonna operate a government educational access channel. This is, this is where all the government meetings go on channel twenty, and then operate a public access channel, which is where all the other programming in the community goes, and that's on channel twenty-one. We required them to cable cast twenty hours per week of original or replayed programming, video, and replay all of our city meetings. That was something, we had never specified how much we wanted them to actually play our meetings on the can, on the channel before, but what we did in this agreement was require them to play our city meetings at least a couple of times before the next city meeting, and so that we could assure that people had access or the ability to watch those meetings. We asked them to provide a weekly schedule of all the programming and provide a archive of all the past programming. Not moved for me here. There we go. Oh, that was too much. Okay, there we are. Another thing that we asked for was closed captioning. We asked for monthly reporting requirements, and this was a pretty detailed section. We asked for the number of programs produced, the number of programs, programmers, the number of public meetings recorded, website analytics, social media analytics, the number of volunteers, their staffing levels, report of any errors. We also asked for things like their meeting minutes and their financials, and they have provided these things. This is stuff that we do get. And I think at the, at the time, when we came up with this list of things, we were really trying to get some kind of sense of how much viewership is actually watching the content that Solana Media Connection puts out on their channel and out on, on YouTube. There's no way to really record what happens on Cox. So this was a way for us to, you know, look at the programming and see how many people are actually watching stuff on, at least on the social media side. So then on June twenty-second of this year, we had another discussion about Solana Media Connection agreement. And the agreement terms provide that a formal notice of intent to terminate has to be delivered before July first in order to terminate on December thirty-first. At that time, the discussion really centered around performance with video and audio quality has really been an issue that we've had a lot, a lot of discussions about. And staff was directed in June to provide notice of intent to terminate the agreement with the intent to provide an extension until June of two thousand twenty-one. There was also lots of discussion about, you know, how do we manage this video service going forward? Do we want to look at going in-house? Do we want to look at providing, finding a, a third-party vendor to do this? Or we want to just keep going forward with Solana Media Connection? So December twenty-eighth, which was just a couple of weeks ago, we did actually formalize the approval of the extension of that contract. So the contract now goes until June thirtieth, and the city has to provide notice if we want to terminate by May thirty-first. If we don't want to terminate, we'd want things to continue on. We don't have to do anything, and it will go until December thirty-first. All other provisions of the agreement remain unchanged at this time. And at that point, we also committed to providing more information to the Commission in January. I'm sorry, I've got somebody in the waiting room trying to get in here, and I'm trying to manage three screens, so I think I fixed that. So today, city staff have really stressed with Solana Media Connection over the last couple of years the importance of providing the public with a reliable method of viewing city meetings, and we've tried to do what we can to advise and assist. Scott Gardner's going to all of their board meetings. I've had many discussions with Solana Media Connections. We've talked about things like your, their hardware and their software, their connection, you know, tried to help troubleshoot. But it seems like we continue to have some of the same concerns. Some have gotten a little bit better. It'll go, it'll be okay for a while, and then it seems to continue to have issues. But the ongoing concerns are really some of the same concerns that we've had since we started this discussion in two thousand nineteen. And, and so audio quality, obviously, is probably the, the top one that's been an issue as of late. Video quality is something we've talked about. Meetings not being cast in their entirety, blank screens, website outages, and then there's been some occasions where members of the Commission were hot-miked prior to the meeting. I think that happened earlier this year. And, and some of these concerns, I mean, they go up, and the last meeting that we had was not actually, the audio had several issues, and every time a new speaker came on and their name flashed across the bottom of the screen, there was a twenty-five or thirty-second delay in the audio. So the meeting that was broadcast last week on the website and on the cable channel, you could barely even tell what was happening during that entire meeting. So, so these are not, these issues are, are ongoing. It's something that's as recent as last week, we had some of these concerns. So as we've moved through this process, we've had several conversations about alternate service provision or what it would like, be, look like to do something different than what we currently have today. And so I, I just put in this table, the scope of services, and, and this isn't necessarily all-inclusive of the agreement, but I just kind of went down through the agreement that we have, what they provide today, and that's to manage the public access and the government channel. They manage the access studio across the street. They also provide video production training and that sort of thing, different kind of training programs. And then the big thing is playback and cable casting, and of course, I think the one that we've been focused on the most is city meetings. They also do other local programming, which would be like, you know, local events. They do local government programs. In the past, they've been things like SAL News, Your City in Action, other content, like right now, they have a, a news show that they're doing, and they have done some other content for some other, some other entities outside. They've done some content for the county about the jail. They do off-site recording and off-site casting of meetings. I'll talk about that here in, in just a minute. So as you can see, I've kind of outlined the three options that we have. We continue with Solana Media Connection, find an alternate provider, or do some or all of this stuff in-house. Solana Media Connection is gonna, is required to do the most, and they have probably the most comprehensive list of, of requirements there. I don't think that we'll be able to find an alternate provider that will do much outside of maybe city meetings and some small, you know, local government programs, like things that we could maybe kind of produce in-house and then play on the channel. I don't know that they would do much more than those two things. In-house, we could certainly manage the access channel and the government educational channel. The community access studio, I have some stars in there. The community access studio, I have some stars in there, in a couple of these boxes, and those denote that we could certainly take a look at doing those things in-house, but there's going to be corresponding additional cost. It could be expensive to do some of that stuff in-house, probably more expensive than it would be to continue to do it with Salina Media Connection. City meetings is something that we could certainly do in-house, and then the local government programming, you know, we could do that as well. One of the big things, and I guess we're probably not going to talk about it a whole lot on this slide, but later on, is off-site recording and off-site casting of meetings. Right now, Salina Media Connection does that. That's something we'd really have to dig into and see what the capabilities are. There seems to be all kinds of issues around off-site meetings. We have a lot of audio problems. We've had to hire off-site or a different third-party audio provider for the last couple of meetings. But it just seems like those are a challenge, so that's something that's probably going to be challenging for anybody, no matter what we do. I'm not sure that we have the answers to all of those problems. We could certainly in-house cast meetings to YouTube. Off-site is not as big an issue, but getting it on the cable channel does present some concerns or issues, or it has in the past, it seems like, pretty regularly. So, here, I just wanted to give you kind of an overview of a cost estimate of what these programs maybe look like. So, alternate service provider, you know, and it's really hard to pin down an exact number on this because we don't exactly know what we're asking for. It really determines, we really need to determine the level of service we're asking for before we can get a real good price. So, these estimates just include, for the alternate service provider, this just includes meetings, and I think it would be between $50,000 and $110,000. We had a quote from Swaget, a company that does this. They are all off-site, but they are the ones that actually flip the switch. They would charge about $50,000 in equipment on the front end, and then $100,000, $100,000 plus annually to manage all the meetings that we have. An in-house estimate would be from $70,000 to $140,000. And what I did there is I just took one employee, if we had one employee to provide these services, I think it would be around $70,000 for an employee and benefits, and then $140,000 if we were to have two. But this also, we'd have to determine the level of service and develop a plan. Move forward from there. Salina Media Connection, it's $220,000 annually. We already know it's in the contract there. And I have listed on here, on this slide, reliability and accountability, and this is something that I think we've kind of struggled with in the past. So, with an alternate service provider, I think we'd have, you know, a pretty good, if we had a contract, we would maybe be able to tell them, hey, we're having issues. We need you to fix them. In-house, certainly, they would be our staff, so that's something we would manage as we manage any of our personnel. So, I think we'd have a pretty high level of accountability if there were issues. And that's something we've really struggled with with Salina Media Connection. You know, we have an issue, we'll tell them about the issue, and, you know, generally, lately, they've been very good at responding. But in the past, we've had issues with, you know, trying to get meetings cast, or there may be an issue with the casting that we just aren't able to find a resolution. And I just want to note that the estimates here do not include any additional cost for equipment, so they're, you know, if we took it in-house or had an alternate service provider, there may be some additional cost. These are just the annual cost to run the service. I want to talk a little bit about Salina Media Connection viewership. We haven't really touched on this very much in a while. The only really way that we can figure out what their viewership looks like is if we take a look at their analytics, and one of the things that they provide us is their analytics from YouTube. And so, the average number of monthly views that they're getting on their YouTube channel, and this is just their, this is just the content outside of government meetings. They actually have two channels. They have the government meeting side, and they have this side. And the reason I didn't put the government meetings on here is because, you know, that would be something that if we move forward with SMC, they would continue to do that. If we decided to do a different approach, those government meetings would be played on YouTube just on a different channel. So, they have about 3,500 monthly views. And this box here is just, I took a snippet of the actual report that is provided to me, and so, these are the top three videos, and this was November. But these have actually been the top three videos for every month for the last, for all of the rating period here, August to November. And they've gotten anywhere from 300 to 500 hits, and it's those three videos seem to be the top viewed videos on YouTube for SMC. A majority of the content that was created before, or I was, what I'm trying to say is, the older content is really the stuff that plays. There's not really very many, much new content that's getting very much traction at all. Actually, one of the, one video that was produced by Salina Media Connection in 2020 in August got 189 views, but it's really just not had a whole lot of viewership on that channel. I will mention that on the government channel in November, they did have a lot of viewership, or more viewership than normal. They had some videos that were in the 500 or 600-point range, and those videos were of Celine County's commission meetings, where they were talking about the public health order and mask mandates and that sort of thing. So, where we're at today is what we really need is to get some input from the Commission on how you would like us to move forward. I can certainly develop an RFP to provide an out, to get some answers on what an outside provider would cost. I can put together a staffing plan. We can figure out, you know, exactly what it would cost to do this in-house. But what we really need to know is what service level is desired from the City Commission? What is it that you want us to keep? Do you want us to continue with the outside, or the additional programming outside of city meetings? Are you interested in maintaining some sort of a community access center and a studio? Do you want us to provide any kind of outside training the way that Salina Media Connection does? Do you want us to manage additional content? Another question is, is off-site live streaming on YouTube and delayed replay on cable casting something that would be acceptable? I think that would be something that we could manage in-house, but that is a question. Live streaming seems to be an issue off-site quite a bit. So, what we really need today is just some inputs, some guidance on what the service level is, and if there's any interest in, you know, putting together a staffing plan, putting together an RFP to see what's out there. We can certainly do all those things. We need to move kind of quickly if we're going to send an RFP out. But I can't really send an RFP out unless I know what it is that the Commission is, you know, what services the Commission really wants to provide.
Mr. Wood, in the services that are provided, how much of that is just city business, our planning commission, our city commission, and what portion of it is the county and other entities?
Well, the county's a pretty small portion of the overall meeting load. And just in kind of the analysis here, I've done a little bit of legwork to figure out how many hours, just so I would know how many hours we would need if we were going to do this in-house and have an employee. And the county is typically, they have about a one- or a two-hour county commission meeting each week, and then they have a planning commission meeting that happens every so often. It's quarterly, sometimes monthly, it just depends on the amount of action they have. But for us, we have planning commission meetings, we have city commission meetings, we have several meetings that we don't cast, but it's about, it would be less than 20 hours a week of actual streaming of city content, and then maybe two or three hours of county content a week, as far as just meetings. And that would be if we were to record all of our city meetings that happened in 107, and we don't do that today. So, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Can I be happy to answer any questions, or would I just throw this open for discussion? This is my last slide outside of some maybe additional comments. And Salina Media Connection is also on the line. If you have questions for them, happy to answer any of your questions and just facilitate a discussion at this point.
Jacob, can I, as a citizen, this weigh in and kind of be a part of the conversation?
We're going to have the Commission ask some questions and stuff first, Mr. Norland, and we'll...
Could I make an appeal for something to consider as the Commission asks questions?
We'll get to public comment here in just a minute, so.
Okay.
Okay, do we have comments or questions from the Commission for Mr. Wood?
Commissioner Davis, it's more a comment. I would hold, you know, the mission of Salina Media Connection, you know, on the same level as our library, our symphony orchestra. I mean, it's a different art form, but, you know, I certainly want to keep all of our outside programming and add to it. I would not want to end up with a service that does just the government meetings, because I don't think that that would be easily resurrected in Salina if we shut this down. I mean, there may be some outside producers who would eventually pull it together, and then all we've done is recreate what we have, and we already have the resources. I mean, if, you know, we're going to inherit a lot of equipment if that contract with them ends. So, I just think keep it used. I mean, it's a very unique asset for a community to have.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Commissioner Davis, was that?
Yeah, I'm done.
Okay. Commissioner Hodges here. Jacob, have you given any thought to where we could carve out studio or production space within the city-county building? Or if we're looking at taking it in-house, I'm assuming that one of the advantages would be that the potential mothballing of Memorial Hall, if there's space in-house for us to do it?
Yeah, I haven't looked into that too hard just yet, but I think there's certainly space here to do. If we were to try and replicate some of the things like the Your City in Action, and just like little Salina News things that we have done in the past, I think we certainly could find space somewhere, whether it's here or at the Arts and Humanities somewhere. I mean, I think we could certainly find space to put something together, to put a green screen, or to manage those sorts of things, for sure.
And then, Commissioner Hodges, again. What would be our, if we were to take it in-house, what would be our relationship with the county? Would our, would city employees go ahead and provide that service for the county? Would the building authority be looking at funding equipment upgrades? Have you given any thought to how that kind of?
I have had conversations with Phil Smith Haynes, the county administrator, about this, and I've actually reached out to some other communities to see how they do it, and most people have additional people in their IT department that manage this. And my thought is, is that we would try and find a setup where we would probably purchase the cameras and get everything set the way it needs to be, and then have one of their IT people trained to be able to flip the switch and turn the video on. But certainly, they're willing to work with us any way we need to move forward, as long as we have the ability for their videos to continue to be streamed.
Thank you.
Mr. Frands there. Billy, do we, or does Salina Media Connection broadcast USB 305 meetings?
They do. Those meetings are not live-cast, but they're rebroadcast at a later time, and that is something we could certainly, I don't think that would be too big a deal for us to continue to do that on the cable channels.
And Mike's Craig here. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the school district invested in equipment, and they're responsible for producing that video content and then delivering it? Is that correct?
I believe that that's correct. Salina Media Connection does have some people on the line here. They could tell us, I don't, we don't govern that relationship at all. That's not part of our contract, so it's not really something that we deal with.
That arrangement would explain why they are not listed as contributing anything financially to the, to SMC.
Commissioner Davis here again. If this were brought in-house, would there be a mechanism for independent producers to get their productions broadcast? Or would you envision this being a government-only?
Well, I mean, I think that we certainly could, we could allow that. It would be a lot easier if we didn't do, if we just did government content and only had to really worry about the one kind of government channel. But that's kind of that matrix, you know. We could provide those services. It just, it's going to cost us time and money to have an additional person or a person that's dedicated and knows how to do that, and is available to the public to upload those things. So, certainly, we could do that if that's what the Commission wanted us to do.
So, Mike's Craig here, if I may. That, one of the issues there is creating a public forum that creates First Amendment speech rights, so come one, come all. If we take that approach, we need to be prepared to be receptive to, you know, whatever volume might come our way. We don't have any authority to do content limitation or volume limitation.
And would that mean turning the public channel back over to Cox? You know, we used to have three, and now we have two. As you give them away, you're never getting them back.
Yeah, and we haven't had any conversations with Cox. I mean, our franchise agreement with Cox allows us to have two channels at this point. One, and they are, they're specified for government and then educational, so they are, they are different in what content they're supposed to provide. So, I guess I don't really know the answer to that question. We would have to, we'd have to talk with Cox, and it would be, I think it would be difficult for us. I mean, we could do whatever we need to do, depending on how many people we're going to hire, but to fill content in those, in that other channel, I think would be difficult for us to do. And actually, I think it's difficult for Salina Media Connection to do. If you ever watch the channel and look at the schedule, there's a lot of stuff that's broadcast and rebroadcast, stuff that's played on other channels that's rebroadcast on that channel. So, I mean, it is, there is a lot of time in a day, and filling it with content is not easy, and I think Salina Media Connection could attest to that. And that's maybe part of the reason why some of the content that they have is, you know, continues to be from time past. So, I think we could do it, but it would take a commitment and probably a different thought in how we staff it.
Yeah, I hate to lose the channel. You know, we have three or four colleges, universities around here. You know, there's lots of opportunity to fill those hours, but I think once that channel is lost, it's gone forever.
Mayor Hoppick here. There may be a lot of opportunities, but I don't see those opportunities currently being used, and with the change in, what I want to say, technology, I almost see that becoming less and less of an issue. I guess as, for myself, as a city standpoint, I would like to see us do an RFP and also consider in-house and making, and dealing with the government educational channel, and if anything, making it better. I think that without the Salina Journal being as much of an impact as it used to be, I think we need to do everything we can locally to, whether it's on Cox or it's on YouTube or whatever, to get our message out. And I think for the dollars that we're investing, I'm not sure that I see the public access channel being worth the extra dollars, and that's my own opinion. I know we need to replace, what was Rachel, what was her?
Community coordinator?
Yes. I see that, we need to be replacing that position, and I think that position could feed into what we can do with our current government access channel, so.
Well, I think the government, Commissioner Davis, the government productions, you know, can, you know, they can flourish, and there're not that so many of them, but you have direct control over them. But I think the true public access parties is very unique, and, you know, city government's not necessarily wanting to get in the role of deciding which content is appropriate, which ones aren't. I mean, there are times when it's nice to have a private organization or foundation handling that.
As far as Mayor Hoppick here, the public access channel, if they want to continue to do that, and they can fundraise and do that, I'm okay with that. I'm, I'm okay with that.
Uh, Commissioner
That's something that does, but I'm not sure that's something the city uh, should be funding at this point.
Yeah. Commissioner Frands there. I have, unless Commissioner Ryan has a comment, I would ask that we open it for public comment and then we can continue the debate as to how we want to proceed after we hear that.
Commissioner, Commissioner Ryan here. I can see everybody else weighed in with their opinion. And in my opinion, I think Salina Media can benefit from the city either contracting out the services or taking it in-house. Uh, I think the real issue here is quality. And uh, maybe uh, when Salina Media and its predecessor was created in the analog era, um, and the city, I think, felt that they were getting something extra for putting the money in by getting their meetings broadcast. But at this point, I think uh, we should take it in-house because we want the level, a higher level of service than, than they can provide. We want real professionals to be able to tackle the, the technical issues that come along. And uh, uh, if we had our own in-house people or preferable to me, a uh, an out of house source, I think that uh, they would have that kind of extra expertise still in, expertise. And uh, for Salina Media, I think they can do a better job of fulfilling the educational and the public uh, portion of their mission if they're independent of what they have to worry about over in the, in the city county building. So um, I think it's a win-win all the way around for, for, to let them be independent and for us to take over the production.
Okay. With that, well, uh, I think Mr. Norland had a comment to make and then I believe Salina Media Connection's on also. So who wants to go first?
Uh, I'd like to. Uh, and uh, Mike, thank you very much. And I hope you'll allow me the relative informality of the Zoom. Nice to see you all and nice to be able to address you by first name. I hope you'll not think I'm being disrespectful if I don't say Commissioner. Uh, and Jacob, by the way, I wanted to say hi. Welcome to you. I've been meaning to come in. There's been a pandemic around, but uh, I'm Matt McCracken near Hayes. I understand you came through there. So hi. I've heard good things about what you're doing uh, just generally. So uh, Mike, I think that I agree with you in a lot of ways about the significance. And I would chime in heartily about the Salina Journal. Uh, in fact, I think that's one of the key things on my mind. I, I think you probably are aware that they have gone to one editorial op-ed page a week. Um, and I'm seeing the kind of really chaos and dysfunction which spreads to uh, groups that you're familiar with, like the Granny Brigade, et cetera. Uh, there's a lot of passion running in this town and there's a real need for people to address each other. And as I said to Tamara Quinn, the editor in Capital Journal, uh, really, we're going to do away with one place where citizens have a chance to talk to each other in the midst of this kind of environment. Their decisions are economic and I know I'm not going to be able to make all of, of, of those arguments here. But um, and actually Carl, I agree with you too about needing uh, to have professional people. I've, I, but I'm uh, well, let me just say Carl and I disagree politically sometimes, but I think there's mutual respect. I've always appreciated the fact that we could talk. And um, what we're talking about much more than money here, and I'm going to try not to be just overly emotional. I think the city has not only the need, but the responsibility to invest significant funds in that. And I agree uh, with Mike that uh, Rachel Hein Constantino's positions, funds might be used in that way. My experience has been that when you hire somebody out house, you get out house product. We need to have people who are connected to the community, not people who are brought in. I can't speak to technical expertise. I think uh, that Salina Media Connection can do that. But it has never, uh, it's always been important here, but it has never, ever been so critical as right now to have a forum for community discussion and response. Um, I think you're right that um, a lot, uh, Jacob, you're talking about a lot of it being old content. And certainly I, I think that's true. It's, it's been difficult before, and especially in COVID times, to be able to get people to uh, produce that kind of uh, a programming, the reach out kind of programming. But I do know that Salina Media Connection has been doing a yeoman's job of trying to get that done. I want to just mention that I also served with Commissioner Ryan. Uh, I'm sorry, with, with Trent Davis. I told you I'd be, be first name on the board of Access TV. I'm very proud of that, that we served together. Uh, I was president of that board at the time. And I don't pretend to have special knowledge about the present situation about that. But really my appeal would be to all of you, whether uh, commissioners or staff, that this be a number one priority. I, I disagree respectfully, Mi- Mike, with you and Carl about doing away with that and making it not, you know, bringing in outside experts, so-called. We've got to solve this ourselves. And if we don't show some dedication to doing that, and again, I say that with all respect to all of you because I think you've done your fair share. Uh, and I've sat in on meetings and I've talked to you about that in meetings myself. Uh, we all face challenges, but if we look now at undercutting what the local has been doing, we do ourselves a real disservice. And I don't mean just us. I mean the whole community. So I'll shut up.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Salina Media Connection, is there someone there that would like to address the commission?
I think
Somebody's muted.
Stevens?
Greg, if you're trying to talk, you'll believe you're muted.
There you go.
Okay.
All right. So uh, I've been listening to the discussion and uh, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Okay. And I'm actually more positive than kind of what I hear being expressed here. Uh, a couple of points. Uh, I don't think you could turn a boat around in the ocean in a year. And uh, we inherited a situation that had equipment that was 25 years old. We spent over a hundred thousand dollars worth of equipment. We have new equipment ready to go up in the city county building. Uh, I don't know what's going to happen to that. It's been purchased and paid for. We did uh, meet almost all of the requirements that Jacob spelled out that we were asked to meet. But I feel a little bit that we're in the permanent doghouse. You know, as a faculty member, when I do evaluations, I start with a clean slate every year with my students. And I don't hold something that uh, took place a year or two ago. And uh, a lot of these objections that come up uh, seem to be objections that were uh, serious a couple of years ago, but are less serious now. And let me give you an example of an incident that happened last week that was mentioned, which was the audio. We did have this audio issue and uh, our IT person unfortunately made a mistake and was experimenting while he was taping your program. And he was experimenting so he could try to make it all work better. And it didn't work better. And uh, it's unfortunate that that happened, but we're humans and we make mistakes. And that's not going to happen again because we've had a discussion with him. But prior to that, we hadn't really had audio program, problems. We, here we don't receive complaints. And I don't, the quality complaints are coming from, hot mic occurred when we, when COVID first hit. We started doing uh, our programs using Facebook. And so we were recording them with two cameras and Facebook has that five-minute lag at the beginning and Box Cast, which is our streaming service, had that lag. And that happened once. And so there are things that happen that uh, uh, can't, that are always going to happen when you're around technology. All of you watch the channels on TV now and there are numerous examples where there are drop-offs and freeze frames and those kinds of things. This is the top quality uh, experts in the country that are providing that service. So I don't know that we're going to hire anybody that's going to provide that much better service than what we're doing with the equipment that we have. Uh, we're still going to have some of those same issues that are going to take place. Now, to talk a little bit in relation to what Dr. Davis mentioned. Uh, I put together, I haven't, I don't know everybody that has uh, worked here as a uh, IT, as an intern or anything. But Salina Media Connection has helped start a creative uh, film industry in Salina, I truly believe. Uh, we have Cash who got his start here and he's out doing great stuff. We have Isaiah Marcott who's been doing great things and he's working through the uh, the uh, Masonic Temple Group. Uh, we have Paul Green that came to Salina because of Salina Media Connection. Uh, uh, Dean Kalenda did Liberty Football. And I was interrupted at the beginning of this meeting because Liberty Football wants us to do their games this year. And uh, uh, Devin Fredeking, who is also working with Dean, doing um, uh, starting his own business. Uh, Zach with Accessible Home Healthcare comes in here and uses our studio. He uh, works in New York and he's moved to California. And I'm sure there's numerous other people that uh, have also uh, got their start because of what we're doing. And uh, I know Arts and Humanities and the Art Center is stepping up their involvement with uh, the film industry. And I took some time over the weekend. I won't uh, spend a lot of time here, but uh, cable TV is not going away. Uh, what's happening with all the streaming services is they're raising their rates and people are starting to get frustrated with them. And they're uh, they're isolating their services that they're offering. So uh, cable is going to continue to play a role and uh, there are 1,500 community access stations across the country. What David Norland was mentioning is absolutely true. In this day and age, it's the community voice that is going to pick up the civic discussions that need to be picked up in the community. You know, I helped do the civic luncheon lectures for six years out of K-State. And people really have a thirst for having discussions about local and regional kinds of issues. And there's a role for Access TV, Salina Media Connection to play in that as well. It's just that unfortunately, COVID hit this last year. And uh, it hit at about the time our contract was being discussed in, in May and June. And we had to switch over to using different kinds of equipment, especially when Zoom came about. We were asked on a Friday night to prepare for Zoom meetings on Mondays that you guys were having. And that's over the weekend with altogether different equipment and we were able to pull it off. There might've been a few little glitches here or there, but we had the equipment that we needed to have and we were prepared to do it. So I don't know if you're going to get that from very many others sources. Couple of other things I might mention is in regard to the budget. Uh, our budget from the city this year is not $220,000. It's less than that. It's, it's around $200,000, a little over. Uh, because the, the numbers have gone down. Plus in the last contract, we got paid for the external meetings that we did. And now we're doing those all at, as uh, part of the contract contribution. We're not getting paid extra for those. So uh, that number is not quite right. So around $200,000, we have two channels here. And uh, according to the Alliance for Community Media, most stations have doubled the budget to provide the kind of quality that we're giving. So I think we're good quality. When I look at the comparisons of the other organizations that you might try to bring in or whatever, I don't know how you're going to match what we're doing uh, for the kind of budget that you've anticipated that it's going to be. Furthermore, when we've stepped, when I stepped in here in 2019, uh, there was some staff turnover. That's all been fixed. And we haven't had any turnover hardly in 2020, other than students that have come and gone. So I don't think that should be on the list as, as a problem anymore. Uh, another thing is we knew we had to get the equipment brought up to date. And that's what our focus was on with the same budget that we'd had before, that didn't really leave us any extra. We're giving the community $5,000 of volunteer time. And if you look at the Kansas volunteer rate, that's $139,000 worth of income you're getting from volunteer time. That if we're gone, you're going to have to cut, to provide the kind of services that we're offering. That's what it's going to cost you extra because you can't do this with one person. You can't probably do it with two people. Uh, if you're going to hire a quality person, you're going to be in that $60,000, $70,000 range. And uh, so those are some of the facts. I hope in the future, as we continue, as we have these discussions, that we get to participate in gathering some of the data here. Because uh, there's a lot to this that I think needs to be brought out before we rush to some quick, quick decisions, in my opinion. Uh, accord, I'm, I'm highly positive about what we can do here. I do not think we should ever expect that we're going to provide you NBC or CBS or Fox or CNN because that's not the role of community television. The Harvard uh, Institute has reports out on community television. They say it should be local voices that tell the stories of local communities that provide the engagement and civic sharing that's needed for communities in a time like this. So, oh, those are just my quick kind of thoughts here. Uh, I'm going to stop. If you have some questions, be glad to answer some.
I just want to weigh in briefly. When we were uh, this has been the case for some time. But Salina historically has a very specific historical role, not just in this state, but nationwide. Columbia, Missouri, to take an example, which is a fairly progressive town, has nothing, nothing compared to what we have. They're, they're, they're on a shoestring. And uh, they may, I think they've begun to beef that up, but hello, here's a major college town, doesn't have anything comparable to us. I think we need to keep in mind the kind of pride that we have in this organization going forward. And I would just weigh in. I'm, I'm open to Greg's uh, response about this. And I'm not trying to raise this whole thing as a discussion here, but I, I'm one that cut the cable channel because of cost. And I can get it on YouTube and I can get it online. And that's, so it's good to have that backup. You know, you gotta have, you have a quarterback, but you gotta have quite a few receivers in order to get the ball down the field. So I think there's a discussion about how the city can help make the kind of content we're talking about available. It is very important. They have meetings. Very important. You and I know that. But if we can get that kind of content where people can discuss one-to-one in forums, so that some of the tensions we are feeling as a community, it'll help keep you safer, commissioners, as well as everybody else.
Okay. We need to bring it back to the commission.
Thank you, Mike. I just need to weigh that in.
Does the commission have any questions for uh, for Mr. Stevens, for Greg or his staff?
Um, Commissioner Hodges here. Um, Greg, I was just wondering, so like, I know that you've had the equipment at Salina Media Connection for a while. Um, at what point are we looking at having that installed? Is that something that doesn't make any sense as long as we're still meeting remotely? What's the, what's the, the status of that?
Well, our control, our master control room equipment's all installed. The equipment that we purchased for room 107 is ready to be that we purchased for Room 107 is ready to be installed. We just have one cable that is a very unique cable that B&amp;H in New York is shipping to us. It could be here next week, and we're ready to install it. The other thing that is going on at the same time is Cox is working with USD 305. We've got to run a cable from upstairs down to the USD 305 room, which is in the back of Memorial Hall. They keep their servers there, and that's where Cox has their, their master head server in there, too. So we got to run in there. They've got USD 305 that's special access in, and the building's got special access in. So we're coordinating with that. We should have that cable run down this week. That's going to run our cameras from analog to digital cameras, which are HD, so we can send out a better signal on the channel. And I would hate to spend all this money to do all this and then just throw it out the window. And I think Cox did come and talk to Mike here years or so ago about what they thought the channel was worth. And it's, it was probably overpriced, the way they talked, but why do we want to, we don't want to throw that away, I don't think. You know, if it's worth $200,000 as a channel, let's not give that up. Let's try to create some value out of it, because there are many communities in the country that are looking at media as economic development. And we can do it in Salina, too. I think, and Brad maybe could address this, I don't know. I don't want to put him on the spot here, but
We're kind of running short on time here.
There's more growth and interest in that area.
Okay. To save a time, I'm going to bring it back to the commission. Do we have any other comments or commissioners?
Yeah, Mayor Hoppick, I'd like to weigh in if I might. You know, back when the city did this, and it was in the early 90s sometime, we, you know, the technology approach was appropriate. This was about the only way that somebody wanted to produce something locally could do so. And there was a funding stream that was provided specifically for that. That was almost 30 years ago. 30 years, a lot of things have changed. You know, the funding stream dedicated to this disappeared in about 2008, I think, when the state took over the franchising. And we continued to carry it for a time. Technology has passed us by. Just about anybody with a cell phone can publish video productions. You know, the software's readily available to do that at either free or next to no cost. There are probably some packages that are higher end. The, you know, it's, it's just, it's a model whose time has come and gone, in my opinion. I think our approach to this should be to try to integrate whatever we do here with our public engagement program, which I think has, needs some serious attention, and we need to pursue that. I think our priorities ought to be is to first focus on broadcasting and publishing city commission meetings and work sessions with reasonable quality. It's never going to be perfect. I watched some meetings from other communities who do it in-house or by other things, and it seems like there, you can always find a little audio glitch or something somewhere. I think we should broadcast other selected city and board meetings. Now, I don't know which ones we do broadcast. I know the planning commission has done regularly. Beyond that, I'm not sure. I know not all of them are broadcast. And then I think we could make the service available to other public agencies, Celine County, USD 305, on a fee-for-service basis. And if we want one public programming, I think that that takes it a step beyond. There are complications with doing that because of, as City Manager was talking about, content regulation and the inability to do that in terms of either content or volume. So I'm in favor of proceeding with getting an RFP. Salina Media certainly should be welcome to submit one also. And I think we should do a parallel in-house proposal, is the word, to see how we might do this in-house. That's where I am right now. I just, you know, I think the time has come to move forward.
I'm going to echo Mr. Franz's remarks. And frankly, when Greg speaks to Cash Hollister and some of the people that have come out of our system, I think that you can redouble your efforts and be even more than you are if you aren't saddled with worrying about the government side of the production. So I agree with him that we should move in the direction of an RFP or a separate production in-house.
Commissioner Davis, I would really disagree. And I think Mr. Norland made a very good point. You know, this is a community institution, and I would not look at it from the budgetary. You know, the city's not going to go broke from supporting Salina Media Connection. But we have no way of replacing what it can provide once that channel is gone. You know, the technology changes, but you know, Channel 3 probably uses cell phones. I mean, I know they don't. They use fancy cameras, but they could. But it's, you know, if you want to get the news, where do you go? You go to Channel 3. You know where it's going to be. You could care less how they produce. And if people here in town want to produce community content, produce it any way you want, but folks know where to go look for it.
I guess I don't understand why the conversation suggests we're going to lose either Channel 20 or 21. My assumption is 20 will still be available for government, and that 21 will still be available for the public and the educational portion of this. It's just the two entities may operate them separately. But I don't understand why we would lose a channel.
Well, you know, I think, you know, Salina Media Connection produces the government programs, and I've always considered it, you know, their contribution, you know, that they get other money, which, which I have no problem with them using towards the educational part. But, you know, they are providing a service. And don't forget, last year was the first time that we actually told them in years exactly what we wanted them to do. And we gave them six months. And we said, okay, we're going to look back and see what happens. I mean, we're expecting them to just fix everything, and nobody's fixing anything in 2020, or early 2021, because it's not a normal, it's not a normal environment. Anything involves getting people together has been slowed down. And, you know, we've told them what we wanted. They're making strides in that direction. And I think, you know, we should be asking what we can do to help them, rather than slam that. I think you can run both. I just don't see, and I don't know what the regulations are from Cox's to who, I'm going to use the word owns, but with only the educational channel, whether they're both owned by the city and the city decides who then produces on that. I don't know. I'd have to get the proper city manager to answer that. I just wouldn't be too quick to pull the plug on what is beginning to turn around.
I just have to weigh in that the Salina Media Connection's name, I want to just say the two or one. Surely, Mike, there is some way in here that there could be cooperation with the existing operation, rather than marketing it out.
I need Commissioner Hodges.
I just want to say that I do agree with a lot of what Commissioner Franz had to say. And I feel like we're looking at, we've got two different missions here that we're trying to fulfill. We're trying to get out information about the city and the city commission meetings, and we want it to be done in as professional and accessible way as possible. Then we also talk about the education and production component. And I think that those two things don't naturally fit together, at least in the context of our conversation. And something that I've, I've thought for the last couple of years is, you know, I think there's value to having production classes and for being able to, and for helping people create their own content. But I'm kind of, I'm thinking that's something that looks more like one of the class programs at the public library, as opposed to its own freestanding channel that doesn't generate a lot of original content or viewing. And, you know, it kills me to say this, but literally, anybody with, with, with one of these can create and upload content. And I just, I'm struggling to find some value there. So I think I'm not in favor of going with an outside agency. I think that that's going to give us some limitations that we aren't going to be happy with. And I think ultimately, it's going to get a lot more expensive than we think it is. I'm interested in pursuing an in-house option, at least seeing what that looks like, if we're sure that we can fully fund it and stand it up like it needs to be done. Like, we can't do this, if we want a professional product, we can't do this on the cheap. We need to make sure that we have the right people, the right equipment. If that looks like we need to create some sort of a small studio with a green screen for the content that we want to produce, I just want to make sure that we're taking all of that into consideration. And so that's, that's where I, those are my feelings.
I'm going to quote Commissioner Davis. Where would a citizen upload their production to?
You can just upload it to, to like YouTube. You can put it on, I mean, yeah.
Because I think what's unique about our channels is that the whole community knows there is a place where you can go to look for things that are happening in our community. You know, you just, if I want sports, I know, Channel 32, ESPN, I'm going to find. And if there's something going on in Salina, you know, all right, 2021, you know, I know where it is. And just having that sense of location, I think, is invaluable.
This, Mayor Hoppick here. I'm going to probably fall in line with Commissioner Franz and Ryan, and I'm going to follow Commissioner Hodges. If I had my way, I would like to see it be in-house also. I think we have more control over it. I think we can, I think we can turn it into an asset for us when we look at, at replacing Rachel's position and so on and so forth. Commissioner Davis, I don't want to disagree, but I do disagree a little bit. I watch probably more television than I should, but I'm always trying to thumb through Channel 20 and 21. And I would guess that a majority of the time, when I go to Channel 21, it's not local programming. It's somebody I don't know. It's free speech TV. It's, I don't believe it's the kind of programming that Mr. Norland talked about. So I, at this point, I think I fall in line with, with the other commissioners as far as trying to do an RFP, and then also doing the analysis of how we could bring that in-house. And then I guess, in my estimation, the Channel 21, the public television, that would fall on Salina Media Connection to do that, if that's what they wish to do.
You know, it may be on us to help facilitate that local program.
If it was local programming. But again, I'm going to say, I see a lot of stuff that's not local programming, and that
Right. Well, you know, we used to have it, and then it kind of fell apart. And now we're trying to resurrect it from the ashes, and that's not something that's going to happen overnight.
Mayor Hoppick, Salina Media Connection has raised their hand. They'd like to speak if you're
Okay, we've got about four minutes that we can, we need to kind of finish up here so we can take a small break before we start our four o'clock meeting. So first of all, before we go to
I'd like to speak.
Before we go to Salina Media Connection, I guess, have we given, is there enough direction giving to you to know how we want to move forward? I think four of the five commissioners are kind of, have stated their thoughts.
Yeah, I think from staff's perspective, we've heard pursue in-house and RFPs for third party and bring that back to you.
Okay. Do the other commissioners, Commissioner Hodges agree?
Yes.
Before you get to this, I'd like to speak.
Okay, that's fine.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I've heard, and I kind of felt that probably we would hear this position today. As Greg said, he inherited the situation that we were in. Right now, we have a management team. Greg, who's a professor at K-State Salina. Me, I'm a work counselor. I work with people with all different conditions and so on. And there's Nancy, who just created volunteer organization, and she works with people in the community as well. What I have heard is not a surprise. What I see, who is giving me that information or talking about that, you all look different from me, except for Brent Davis. And I think there's something that Salina needs to realize. Salina, I grew up here. My mother helped integrate the Salina County and Celine, Salina and the county offices here. We have different communities in this town. We are less diverse when it comes to African Americans, at least, not necessarily Hispanic folks, in this town. How we see media, how we use media, what media we have to use is different. You may not realize that, but as an African American, I'm going to tell you, that is true in this community. What I have seen, and I can say that I volunteered here for just a little over a year, has been very educational for me. Not everyone has a cell phone that you can create programs on and get it seen somewhere. Not everyone knows how to do that. Not everyone feels welcome to go just anywhere to get involved in this kind of work. I can't believe it, but today I had a call from someone from Colorado who said, I used to live in Salina, and when I get the virus shot, I want to come back, because I need to get back to Salina Media, she called it our old name, because I need to take advantage of the training that you have. Zach, whose family is accessible, Greg just mentioned the name, Accessible Home Health, thank you, Nancy, said he got started here, and he wants to continue to do some training virtually for us. What really got us off track in our improvement was COVID. It did make it harder for us to kind of progress. We did lose some students last year that had been here and had helped us kind of move forward. We now have good staff that's just community-minded and wants to see how far we can improve as fast as we can. I think we haven't had enough time to do the things that you're wanting us to do. I know it seems like a long time to you, but for what we've had to go through, the change in staff, the change in management, and COVID, it just doesn't seem like there was enough, I don't know, time or initiative given to us to make the changes that you're wanting to see.
Okay.
We have now started a Spanish connection, and we have at least 1,000 and more viewers. This is what I'm talking about. Different communities need different things. Different communities need different things. Um, not all of the African-American community and not all of the Spanish community has even had a chance to partake in what Salina Media Connection has. It just takes time. We're not on the same level, we never have been.
Hate to cut you off.
I know you have to go to another meeting, but I just wanted to say that because what I see and hear is not something that surprises me, but it really does disappoint me at this.
Thank you Debbie for your comments. Okay, um, we will take, uh, about a three-minute break here and be back. And Jacob, you'll bring us all back on?
Uh, the meeting will just continue to roll, so.
Okay, okay. Looks like we're up and running. It is four o'clock, so I will call the January 11th, uh, 2021 Salina City Commission meeting to order. Um, first, um, I would ask that, um, the, confirm with staff that the Open Meeting Act required notice has been properly provided?
Yes, it has.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will have a roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here.
Okay, with that, I would please ask those, um, um, in attendance to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Um, it does look like we have, um, a proclamation, um, item 3.1.
Item 3.1, the day of January 18th, 2021, is Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day in the city of Salina. Ramona Malone, New Jerusalem Missionary Baptist Church Minister of Music, will read the proclamation.
Good afternoon, Ramona, let's, uh, there, we got you unmuted, so.
Yes.
Welcome.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year. Um, Mayor Hoppick and the commission and all in attendance. Proclamation honoring Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., 2021. Whereas the 18th day of January is the birthday anniversary of the late Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., and whereas Dr. King stood before the entire world as a man of peace, champion of human dignity, and an example of love and brotherhood. And whereas the citizens of Salina do recognize Dr. King's contribution to the good of all humankind, and they do desire to perpetuate and implement the ideals expressed in his dream of peace and harmony among all individuals. And whereas, in paying tribute to Dr. King, we are reminded that the duty lies with each of us to fulfill the vision of his life's work. Let us use our time, talents, and resources to give back to our community and help those less fortunate than us. Particularly today, let us not forget Dr. King's own tireless spirit and efforts as we work, celebrate, and pray alongside his people, alongside people of all backgrounds. As one people, let us rediscover the bonds of love and loyalty that bring us together as Americans and as people who share a common humanity. Now therefore, I, Michael Elhoppick, Mayor of the city of Salina, do hereby proclaim the day of January 18th, 2021, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day, Junior Commem- there, Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Commemoration Day, and urge that every citizen of Salina join me in extending recognition and honor to the memory of this great leader of humankind. In witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Salina, Kansas, to be affixed this day, January 11th, 2021. Michael Elhoppick, Mayor, City of Salina.
Thank you, Ramona. Um, I know with COVID, it makes it hard to do anything, but do we have any, uh, celebrations scheduled where we can do that socially distancing or anything?
That was the plan, but due to several individuals experiencing COVID, um, and we actually had, um, Ms. Eleanor Jones, she and I kind of were kind of keeping this going the last couple of years, she had two strokes. So she is fairly incapacitated at this time, so we're praying for her. But, um, we really wanted to do something virtual. Um, this will be a year when we don't have buttons. I mean, there's just, this was, this was a challenging opportunity. However, I believe that, I hadn't gotten confirmation, but I believe that K-Dub is still, Kansas Wesleyan is still going to have something. And I believe Owen Smith told me that, that there will be something on that Monday noon as per normal, um, for the youth. So I didn't get confirmations from him on that, but when I spoke with him earlier, I'm pretty sure that he is definitely doing the one at St. John's Missionary Baptist on, um, Monday, the 18th. Um, but there will not be a citywide celebration, virtual or otherwise, on the 17th, which is a sad thing for me. But, um, but we can all, i- if nothing else, acknowledge the weekend, acknowledge the day, and, um, pray that we just continue to move forward, um, as a city and as a nation.
Exactly. Thank you for your words and I look forward to being able to, to celebrate next year with you in person. Thank you very much for being with us.
Um, um, Mayor, I'm sorry, I just, it just came to my mind, just a, a, a bit of interest with regard to this. Um, I was contacted in August from a gentleman in New York, which I figured it was a scam, but I answered my phone anyway. This gentleman, Mr. Bill Oliver, is a button collector and somehow acquired a few of our buttons, reached out to Pronto Print, then contacted me. And over a course of a couple of months, we presented to him essentially every button that has been produced through this celebration. And he then sent a, a, a small, a token, um, we didn't, we didn't ask him to pay for them, you know, but he sent a small token for the MLK Committee, um, and said, "When you get some more, the next time you have them, please put me on your list and you guys are doing a great job." So I thought I would. That is one incredible piece of information, um, that just says that this is not just a small-town Salina thing. This gentleman was in Brooklyn, New York, and acknowledged that we have something really cool going on here because he'd never seen buttons before.
Cool story, so how many, how many buttons did you send him?
We, you would make me try to count. I believe, I would have to look at my notes because I didn't think about that. I just remembered it just now, but it was every button that we have had from the inception, in addition to a little bit of history of the MLK Adha Committee and Baccos that kind of began that, and he was very appreciative.
Yeah, well, thank you for sharing that story with us.
No.
Have a good day.
Thank you, you as well.
Okay, that brings us to Citizens Forum. This is an opportunity for individuals who, um, would like to address the commission about something that is not on the agenda. We ask that you please give your name and where you're from and limit your comments to five minutes or less. Um, I will turn it over to Deputy City Manager, uh, Jacob Wood to explain how to raise your hand and, and be acknowledged.
All right, thank you, Mayor Hoppick. I'll go over, I got a little short presentation here I'll provide. Okay, so, uh, for public comment, um, what we'd like you to do is raise your hand. Um, you can do that if you're on a Windows machine, you can go down to the Participants tab here. You click on that button, that will bring up, uh, the Participants box. Um, and on the right bottom of that, you'll see some sort of a box here, might have three dots, it might say Raise Hand right there. Go ahead and click that, there should be a Raise Hand option. And then you'll, uh, on, and it'll raise your hand. And then on iPads, it's a little bit different. The, the controls are actually at the top right of the screen, so you can click on the Participants button there. And it will give you the option, uh, to click on your name and then it'll give you the option to raise your hand. Uh, or if that doesn't work, you can slide over to the More tab, um, and just scroll down to the Raise Your Hand button, click on that, and, um, that should work for you. If, uh, if all else fails, uh, hit the Chat button there, um, and you can send me a message. It'll be a private message that goes just to me. Um, or if you're, you got a video out there and you want to just kind of wave, we'll see if we can't, uh, get you on. So with that, let me stop my screen share and I think we've at least got one hand already raised. Uh, it's like, uh, Laney Meyer has her hand raised. Um, let me give you the, uh, option to unmute there.
Shall I talk, shall I talk now?
Yeah, go ahead and tell us your name and I think most of us know you, so.
I'm Laney Meyer and I'm here from Salina and I just walked in the door a few minutes ago, so I missed, uh, the, the discussion before, except for the tail end, so I don't know the details. But I kind of gathered that there is some, uh, maybe a move to not stay involved with the Salina media. If that's the case, I, I am really upset. I think the city needs to continue their connection with Salina media. I think it would be a disgrace for us not to support community involvement in, in, um, the media. They can do so much, no, it's not perfect, but none of us are either. So, um, if I caught the gist of what was happening, I just want to say, please, please reconsider if you're thinking about doing away with, uh, the media covering, covering the meetings. That's it.
Okay, thank you Laney, appreciate it. Mr. Wood, do we have anyone else with their hand raised?
I, I don't see any other hands at this time, Mayor Hoppick.
Okay. With that, we will move into the consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
Mr. Mayor Carl Ryan here. I move to reapprove the minutes of January 4th, 2021.
Commissioner Davis, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for January 4th, 2021. We will do a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. Okay, that will lead us into administration.
Item 7.1, authorize the fire department to purchase one new ambulance chassis, refurbishment and remounting of the patient mod- module of existing ambulance and one Stryker power cot.
Okay, is Chief Royce available?
I am.
Okay, welcome.
May, welcome. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon. Kevin Royce, Fire Chief. I'm here today to ask or seek authorization to purchase one new ambulance chassis, one new Stryker power cot, and to refurb an existing patient module of one of our ambulances. As you may recall, in 2019, the department, uh, began what's known as a remount program. And in lieu of purchasing new ambulances, we actually send one of our old ambulances back, uh, have the patient module box taken off, refurbished, placed on a new chassis, and returned. And by doing this, um, we're easily saving anywhere from 35 to 40%. Most new ambulances now going for easily over $250,000. Um, we've got the cost down to about a, in the 180s by doing it to this way. Um, this will be our third ambulance, we're, we're doing this too, and we've had nothing but success and no problems with the previous two. The department wishes to utilize Osage Ambulance for this remount process pursuant to meeting the single-source selection method of the city's purchasing policy. And specifically, it's for a continuation of an existing project or continuity of similar services in which past performance is considered acceptable and knowledge of the specific works has been demonstrated. Osage has performed the remount process on the prior two ambulances. Um, I've listed specific issues that would meet this requirement in the bullet points, um, and would be glad to answer any of those questions that you had on them at this time before I move on.
Okay.
All right, uh, the department budgeted $200,000 for the purchase of this unit. The cost of this new chassis, patient refurb, and a new power cot is coming in at $183,600. And this cost is reimbursed by Celine County per an inter-local government agreement. Um, I'd be glad to answer any questions on this, the whole process, before I move to the, uh, recommendations.
Continue.
Okay. Uh, this department wishes to authorize a purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment of an existing patient module, and a new Stryker power cot from Osage Ambulances in the amount of $183,600. Other option is do not authorize the purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment of the patient contact, or patient, uh, module, and a Stryker power cot in the, in the price of $183,600 from Osage Ambulances. of $183,600 from Osage Ambulances, and staff is recommending number one.
Okay. Chief, uh, Chief Royce has asked if there were any questions. Does anybody have any questions or comments for Chief Royce?
It strikes me this isn't a question, but last year we paid $184,600, and this year it's exactly $1,000 less?
Yes.
That's interesting.
It, it's, yeah. Um, in a good way, in a good way. I will, I will, I will mention one thing, though, that, uh, the CARES funding that we received this year has made a big difference in this, this particular, uh, situation, because with that CARES funding, we were able to go back and actually retrofit all of our ambulances with the power cot module that actually loads the patient into the ambulance. So that's why you're gonna, that's why, that saved about $16,000 by using that CARES money to do that. Um, so that was very, very beneficial to the department and to the city as a whole.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Mr. Wood, is there anyone out there that has their hand raised with a question or I'm gonna take that as a no.
I don't see any at this time. Sorry, had my mic.
With that, I will bring it back to the Commission for Action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we authorize the department purchase of one new ambulance chassis, two, the refurbishment and remounting of the patient module of an existing ambulance, and three, one new Stryker power cot from Osage Ambulances in the amount of $183,600.
Commissioner Davis, second.
Mayor Hoppick here. We have a motion and a second to authorize the purchase of one new ambulance chassis, the refurbishment and remounting of a module, and one new Stryker power cot. Uh, we will do a roll call this time.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick?
Aye. That passes 5-0. We have no development business at this time, so it appears, based on my agenda, that it's time for my comments as an outgoing mayor. Is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Well, you're all lucky. Some people say I don't listen to my wife very often, but my wife always tells me that if you're gonna talk, you always want to leave them wanting more. So I'll try to make this somewhat short, but hopefully meaningful to all of you. One of the questions I was asked multiple times this year is, boy, I bet you wish you weren't mayor during COVID-19. And I have to answer just the opposite. It was a pleasure to serve as Mayor of Salina during this time, and it was also very rewarding to be surrounded by the Commissioners that I have and the city staff that represents the city. Um, even though we had a lot to deal with when it came to COVID-19, I'm proud of where we're at today, um, because of some of the, uh, things that we have done. Um, I think we took the correct, um, steps to protect the city budget. We were able to furlough some employees while putting others on a shared work program. Taking advantage of the CARES Act, we were able to protect our employees and keep them whole financially at the same time. Surprisingly, our sales tax, uh, sales tax numbers have remained fairly stable during 2020. With the planning and implementation by the Commission with city staff guidance, we have increased our general fund balance from $7 million at the beginning of the year to a projected balance of 9.8 million, and I think we all should be very proud of that. There is also several other accomplishments, accomplishments during 2020. Um, we, even though we were dealing with COVID, we didn't take our eye off the ball of other items that needed to be accomplished. The city reached an agreement for a long-term lease with Saline County on the Expo Center. With the lease agreement, Saline County has agreed to make significant upgrades to the buildings, and when completed, the facility will tie in nicely with the exterior of the Tony's Pizza Event Center. The city of Salina and Saline County have collaborated on a new emergency radio communication system. This system will benefit both the city and county, and this was necessary, obviously, due to the change in the bandwidth. A settlement was reached with the federal government on the Schilling Air Force Base groundwater remediation. The, the federal government has now deposited $65 million with the city for remediation. With the hard work of staff, KDHE, and our consultants, we believe that we have come up with a, a way to remediate our current issue. Originally, if you remember, we thought that price tag to the taxpayers could be as much as $10 million. We now believe that that could be as low as a million, not to exceed $5 million. A new place, police training facility was opened up during 2020. This facility has an indoor shooting range, a large classroom, storage for vehicles, and a 300-degree simulator. The training center should help us with recruiting, recruitment of future police officers while helping to ensure that we have a well-trained police force. The investment in downtown during a pandemic still amazes me. The Leelots are now open and offer both market and non-market rate apartments. The KU School of Medicine and Nursing is in the process of finishing off the remainder of the building that they now own. New businesses continue to pop up along Santa Fe. The Salina Educational Automotive Museum of America is now under construction. The Homewood Suites is now open and anchors the south end of the downtown development. And for those of you who had a chance, the Siepel Theater has re- renovated the, um, new, uh, their building, and the lights on that are just fabulous. And I believe, um, it was, uh, Mr. Anderson, Brad Anderson, that said that it appears now that we may be known as the city of lights. Private investors have also started construction on a new baseball, softball training facility downtown that, uh, will also help bring people to the, to, uh, the downtown area. We have seen tremendous announcements dealing with business expansion this year. Schwann's announced a new 600,000-square-foot expansion to their current facility that will bring in 2022, 200-plus jobs to Salina, making that facility the largest pizza-making plant in the world. Even though it, it was sad for us to announce that, that Signify, formerly known as Phillips, is leaving our community, Kubota sliced Great Plains Manufacturing, at the same time, announced that they are purchasing the Signify facility, will move, be moving a new product line to Salina from Japan. Part of the excitement about this is not only that it is going to continue to keep jobs in Salina, but they will only occupy approximately 150,000 to 200,000 square feet of a 750,000-square-foot building, therefore leaving a lot of extra room for continued expansion in the, in their facility. Again, I tried to keep it short. Um, I think we, as a commission, and I would like for Mike to thank staff for the hard work that's been done during the year 2020, a year that's seen a lot of other communities fall behind. If anything, I think Salina has taken tremendous steps to move forward in the future. Thank you. And with that, with that, we will move to 9.2.
Item 9.2, consideration of a motion to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting the organizational meeting.
Do I have a motion?
Davis, so moved.
Commissioner Hodges, second.
We have a motion and a second to recess the regular meeting for the purpose of conducting the organizational meeting. We will do a roll call.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hoppick? Okay, I will now call the organizational meeting of January 11th, 2021 to order and do roll call. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
I will now accept nominations for mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Davis, I move to nominate Commissioner Hodges as mayor and chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Franz, I'll second that.
Hey, I have a motion and a second. I will now call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
That motion carries 5 to 0. I will now accept nominations for acting mayor and vice chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Hodges here. I move to nominate Commissioner Davis as acting mayor and vice chairman of the Bo- Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Ryan, second.
I have a motion and a second. I will now call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hodges?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
That motion carries 5 to 0. I will now turn the meeting over to the new mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Wicks. Um, I am sorry that we aren't going to be able to, um, conduct this meeting in person so that I can hand over the plaque of appreciation and the gavel personally to, uh, Mayor Hoppick. But I did want to share a brief statement. First, I'll start by reading what's on his, uh, plaque of appreciation. This plaque is given in recognition of service rendered by Michael L. Hoppick as mayor of the city of Salina, Kansas, January 13th, 2020 to January 11th, 2021. And I would just like to say, I don't know if this is kosher to say at this time, but I would like to say that Mayor Mike Hoppick deserves a great deal of praise and recognition for his steady leadership in 2020. It's an understatement to say that 2020 was a tough year. Mayor Hoppick helped the governing body and the city staff address the impact that COVID-19 had not only on our community, but on every single aspect of our organization, our people, our finances, our facilities, our programming. He led us through some difficult conversations about race and policing and the establishment of a citizens review board. And most importantly, and this is the example that I hope to follow in 2021, Mayor Hoppick kept our discussions civil, on point, and moving forward. Thank you, Mike, for setting such a strong example to follow and for leading, uh, leading us through what I had anticipated would be the most challenging year ever in Salina's history. But it does turn out that Salina, like our nation, may face another challenging year ahead. So thank you very much. I appreciate all the hard work you've done to get us through 2020. So a, a round of applause for Mayor Hoppick, please.
Thank you.
With that, I guess that brings to me to some very brief comments. I'm not going to keep you here long. First of all, like all of you did when your terms for mayor started, I want to send my love and my thanks to my dear family. As all of you know, it would be impossible to do this job without our families. To Boo and our sons and daughters-in-law, Ted and Taylor, Grant and Jillian, baby Nora, my mother, and yes, even Roscoe, the dog that you hear barking occasionally in the background. To our friends of the Wolf Pack, it's my hope that we can resume our weekly meals and debates in the months ahead. Each of you has been a tremendous source of support and encouragement, and I'll be leaning on you in 2021. Thanks to you, members of the governing body, for your service and for your vote. Our deliberations together the last four years have demonstrated that ultimately, despite some pretty contentious debate, we all want the best for Salina and her citizens. And even as we disagree about how to achieve that outcome, at the end of the day, or I probably should say, at the beginning of the week, we're still able to come together to deliberate again, and that's a big deal. So for 2021, I, it's my hope that we'll continue to work toward greater public engagement and greater transparency in our actions. We'll continue to encourage diverse points of view, demonstrate mutually respectful discourse within our governing body, and in turn, expect it from the citizens that we serve. We'll continue to build a stronger organization, work to empower our employees, and to recognize the essential contributions of our frontline workers. We'll continue our progress on large-scale, long-term projects like the Schilling Air Force Base remediation and the Smoky Hill River renewal. We'll continue to work to take better care of our existing assets, our parks, our streets, and our infrastructure. And we'll continue to address the many ways that COVID has impacted, and will continue to impact our citizens and our economy, our city revenues and programming and facilities. We will continue to do our best to make data-driven decisions in the interests of public safety and ask you, the citizens of Salina, to please continue wearing your masks, practicing social distancing, wash your hands, and above all, when it's your turn, please get your COVID vaccinations. We all want to return to a more normal life. One of my campaign slogans was, "Good government begins at home." Salina's nonpartisan, no Democrats or Republicans here, just Salina City Commissioners, reminds us that we shouldn't let what divides us nationally divide us here in our community, where we are surrounded by and accountable to our family, friends, neighbors, and businesses. So to wrap this up, and I believe this is a quote I first heard at a city commission meeting, I'm going to paraphrase Nelson Mandela. "Despite the challenges that we will face in 2021, I'm hoping that our planning and our decisions, and ultimately the actions that we take, will reflect our hopes and not just our fears." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. All right, back to Ms. Wicks.
Item 10.7, consideration of a motion to resume the regular meeting for the purpose of completing other business.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I move that we resume the regular meeting.
Commissioner Davis, second.
I'll call roll. Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much, Shandy. Wicks, our city clerk, for running our organizational me- meeting. Um, we will continue with item 11, other business. We have two requests for executive sessions. Um, is there any other business that the Commission would like to, uh, bring up prior to our first executive session?
I do have one update for you following up on last week's meeting, if one appropriate.
Absolutely. Please go ahead, Mr. Frank.
In our conversation last week about, um, Campbell Plaza and the request to redevelop Campbell Plaza, you asked staff to coordinate with SDI about getting the word out to the public as well as soliciting SDI's input. And so, had a conversation with Penny Betels, the executive director, provided her, uh, a copy of the proposal and the site plan and a cover memo explaining, uh, the requests that we've received, and they will have successive meetings of their, their executive board and then their full board, Thursday of this week and then Thursday of, of next week. And so, coordinating with her to get her the information and, and get feedback from SDI as a body, as well as, um, to get the word out to the general public. So, it appears to me that we're probably looking at the end of the month, first meeting in the next month, uh, to be able to bring that back to you on your agenda. to be able to bring that back to you on your agenda.
Mayor Hodges, thank you very much, Mr. Schreger. I appreciate the update. Does anyone have any questions about that or any other items to bring up? With that, we will move to item 11.1, request for executive session personnel.
I guess since we have not officially shuffled our chairs, I'll continue the responsibility here. Commissioner Davis here. I move the, I'm sorry, how many minutes for this person?
Thirty.
Okay. I move the city commission recess into executive session for 30 minutes to discuss the subject of the status of a personnel matter under the city manager's purview based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75-4319B1. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and city Salina YouTube channel at 5:07 PM.
Commissioner Hoppick, second.
We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for 30 minutes, resuming at 5:07. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner Franz?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. And there is a note that possible action may follow our executive session. Thank you.
Okay, this is Deputy City Manager Jacob Wood. I will go ahead and open the room. You should have an invitation to join the executive session. Everybody else who's outside the room, the meeting will remain until we're back.
I don't know my, um, I just lost my internet. I don't know what happened. So.
You're back.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, um, I have a motion, Mayor Hodges. I move that based upon the update provided in executive session regarding a personnel matter under the purview of the city manager, the law firm of Clark Meis in Linville as the city's legal counsel be authorized to direct the expert engaged by the law firm as authorized by the governing body on September 14th, 2020 to proceed to the next phase of evaluation of information relevant to the personnel matter.
Do we have a second? Uh, Mayor Hodges, we have a motion and a second. Um, we'll do a roll call except I'm not sure Ms. Wicks is here, so I'll just go ahead and do that.
Yeah, I think she, I think she's there.
Oh, okay. All right. Commissioner Davis?
Here, I mean, I, sorry. I.
Commissioner France?
Uh, aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. Motion passes five zero. That'll bring us up to, um, item 11.2, um, another request for an executive session on personnel. I'm going to defer to Commissioner Hoppeck. How long do you think that we're going to need on this item?
Oh, I'd like to say 20, but you want to go ahead and go 30?
What? I'm feeling lucky today. As I'm downloading the Zoom app for my phone, let's go, let's go, uh, 20 minutes so that, is there a motion to that effect?
Yes, there is. Uh, Madam Mayor, I move the city commission recess into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss the city manager's performance evaluation based upon the need to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel pursuant to KSA 75 dash four three one nine B one. The open meeting will resume via the same Zoom link and the City of Salina YouTube channel at 5:31 PM.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to recess into executive session for personnel matters. Um, we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Davis?
Aye.
Commissioner France?
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppeck?
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan?
Aye.
Mayor Hodges?
Aye. We will resume in the open meeting at 5:31 PM.
Is everyone here and unmuted? At this juncture, we do not have any options to follow. And we will resume discussion. We'll plan for an executive session, not next Monday because of Martin Luther King Jr. Day, but the week after. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Question, Mayor, would the next meeting would be with the city manager in attendance?
Correct. Correct.
That was either a smile that the city manager had or a grimace.
I appreciate the clarification.
Oh, yeah. Sorry about that. I'm new to this game and didn't mean to freak you out.
Don't apologize.
Commissioner Hoppick here. I make a motion we adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. Is Shandy still on the line for a roll call? If not, I will do it. Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
I'm here. I'm here. Sorry, Shandy, I keep cutting you off.
Commissioner Davis.
Aye.
Commissioner Franz.
Aye.
Commissioner Hoppick.
Aye.
Commissioner Ryan.
Aye.
Mayor Hodges.
Aye. We will see you on the 25th.
Thank you all.